I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I might take this time to welcome everybody to the regular monthly business meeting for the town of Milton, Indiana. And we'll start out with the reading of minutes from the last council meeting. Members appearing at the last council meeting were myself Cedric Sauerfield, Hugh Payne Jr., Dwight Smith, and Jeanette Hensley, and Book Treasurer Amy Smith. And you were here too, weren't you? Ted, what? Okay. Guests included Scott Z. Bell, Virginia Williams, Mark Joy May, Agnes Fisher, Marilyn Fisher, Larry Barrett, Ronnie Russell, David Sweeney Jr., Jenny Pugh, Diane Driscoll, Philip and Ashley Pitcher, Heather Reese, and Tom Geisler.
I thought I wasn't there, but I missed it.
Okay, I opened the meeting with the pledge, and then I thank Jenny for her service to our town and for writing our stories for the local paper. She's going to be missed by all, and we're wishing her nothing but success in the future endeavors. I went on there to discuss all the business, stating that we're still waiting on the call for the bridge sign and monument, and continued to remind residents to become part of the reach alert program by contacting the clerk's office and not to flush anything but to call the paper. New business discussion was that our billing system is now up and running successfully, and we would like to thank our residents for their patience with the changeover. We do apologize for all the delays that were out of our hands. The new bill cards were sent out on May 1st, and they're saying a lot of people haven't got them yet, so hang in there. Hugh discussed the need for the new line mower because the grasshopper is overheating and has been repaired in the past. This was tabled until next month. He also stated that it's time to reseal the paint on the clerk's parking lot. Council requests a minimum of three days for this project, and this was also tabled till next month. Amy discussed the setting dates for the town water operator interviews and executive meeting for employee reviews. I'm gonna break in right there and say that we've put that on hold for right now. These meetings were scheduled for Friday, May 17th, at 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. Amy also discussed that Marshal Geisler has been diligently handing out ordinance violations. Mr. David Sweeney was on the agenda for approval of building his new home on South Milton Street, on South Street. Motion was made by Dwight, seconded by Hugh, and voting was unanimous. Heather Reese gave an update on the park project, stating that we have reached our $50,000 match. She also stated that she would like to start a horticulture class for the interested children in town. Further information to come. Marshal Geisler reported on the ordinance violations and the strategy. He also introduced that the county issued, that the county had issued a new Tahoe, thanking them for their generosity and considering in fulfilling our department with the Tahoe. Scott Z. Bell reported that they have two new recruits that will be starting with training. Scott reached out to Richie, and they requested that we wait and open the sealed bids with a fire truck till next month. Philip and Ashley Pitcher were concerned about the livestock ordinance. They stressed that the chickens and goats that they have on their property are for the Children's 4-H project and asked for an extension on the violation, and asked the council to consider updating and revising this set ordinance. They were granted an extension until June 11th, 2024. Larry Barrett then addressed the council regarding the ordinance of junk vehicles. He asked the marshal, he asked if the marshal had issued violations to these folks and if they were held to the same frame as the other ordinance violators. So now I entertain the motion, and we accept the minutes.
So last month, I don't see anything on here about Ronnie being discussed in the minutes.
Well, Tom, do you remember what we had said to Ronnie the last time?
Absolutely, yeah, I remember the conversation.
Was it Scott showing up or did he not?
Yeah, no, I remember. I think probably the best, you know, if you'd like me to intervene at some point and enter the discussion, I certainly can, but I think, you know, the main thing is Ronnie wanted to discuss, you know, what we could all do. I think we were gonna have a conversation about maybe what we could do that would be somewhat of an agreement where everybody sort of wins and, you know, gives a little. So I think that was kind of where we left it.
Well, I know you were here. I know what we talked about. I didn't have it written down. But we're talking compromise.
But I think we were gonna do that outside the setting of the town council meeting. We're not.
Well, that was one of the things, that's why I wanted to speak, is because of what happened last month.
You want me to move on?
Yeah, go ahead, try to find it.
I'll give you a minute.
It's okay, thanks.
You can find it right there.
Yep. My computer's not stupid. But I can't call the fee line because they have this. It was the 11th, right?
So while we're waiting to approve the minutes, can we go ahead and approve the claims for May 9th to June 16th? So we'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, right?
All second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. Heather, would you like to give your update on the park now?
Sure, there's not much to give right now, other than I have got a bid for the actual equipment. Now, I'm waiting on Mr. Randy Powell to come back in the town. He's on vacation this week. And next Monday, I should send out a reach alert for another town board meeting. We're gonna meet up with him, and I'm gonna have Bruce and Teddy there to discuss the ground layout, delay pipes and stuff for the fountain and stuff. But I want to, Mr. Powell's gonna help you with that one.
Okay.
That's all.
And he's been very generous.
Oh, he's the best.
Very generous.
One of the most neat things is that he can color the pavement, so we'll probably have a board meeting both ways, we'll be in the queue. I mean, here's kind of a layout of what, there's gonna be parking on the outsides, and then the playground right here, basketball pickable, and then hopefully some shelters. And this will be where this one is actually colored.
And the old playground's gonna remain the same as it was before. Okay, Tom, you wanna give your report?
Sure, short suite this evening. Unfortunately, one of our two officers, Officer Cody Frame, has tendered his resignation, has given us notice he is moving on to a local law enforcement agency in a full-time capacity as a patrolman for them. So all good news for Cody. It'd be a great loss for us. He was one of the founding fathers of the current police department, as you see it today. So we appreciate his service, and he will certainly be missed. As luck would have it, I have what I think is going to be the suitable replacement, and we'll set him up hopefully in the coming day, very soon, like a year later this week, early next week, for interviews with you all, with town council. Additionally, I'm excited, very excited about this one. We also have who I think will be our very first reserve officer for the community. He has agreed to the position. We have a little bit more administrative things to handle before I, you know, say any more about that, but that will also be an interview that'll be set up with you all, and hopefully maybe we can tie the two together. So really good things for us there. Lots of activity. You're continuing to see ordinance violations being written for things where they are appropriate. Not all are always appropriate, but we're continuing to work on that and follow up on them, so that's all I have to say.
So before we get a report, like how many tickets, and do we have?
Yeah, we'll get back to that, though. That's something that I like to do. I think self-reporting's a good thing, and we've had a lot going on the last couple months, but we will definitely get back to that next month.
Can you, um, can you approve the minutes with tickets come up and with changes to be made for Ronnie?
Okay, we'll approve them. I'll make them, or I'll entertain the idea of a motion that we approve the minutes with changes when we find Mr. Russell's part in that.
I'll make a motion.
All second, with making the, making the changes or having the change from the suit?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried? All right, and I forgot to remind you at the beginning, but we want to stay back with the requests. When you want to be on the agenda, you need to come the week before, Thursday on the week before. And we extended, we extended till Friday this time, didn't we?
Yeah, Friday.
But it's usually at the Thursday at the workshop we usually have who's on the agenda so that we can do a little bit of research on it and know what, what we're talking about. So this week, the only one that we have on the agenda is Mr. Russell, and you've got the floor.
Oh, well, I had a question for Cedric, and then you guys can't answer it. When he said, "Why don't I move this stuff where I lay my head?", what did he mean by that?
I don't know. I don't know.
And then it was my understanding that Amy suggested that the board meet with me in private to settle this or discuss it, and nobody has contacted me?
Well, that was a misunderstanding, that was our misunderstanding, because I didn't know.
You didn't know?
No, I didn't. It was a misunderstanding. I didn't know.
Did I mention that in the meeting?
In the meeting?
It's not.
You said that this isn't going to settle here. The board needs to meet with Mr. Russell in private.
And we brought that by Tom to discuss outside of the meeting.
No, Tom suggested that he would meet with me, him and I, one-on-one. Then Amy said that this is not gonna get solved here, so sometimes the board needs to meet with me to discuss, rather than having it in this house. And you live right across from me. I've never heard anything from you. I've been in to see Amy twice, and Dwight was here. He hadn't mentioned anything about it.
Well, that's why I said it was a misunderstanding. But if I come to see you, I'll bring another board member with me, because I don't go one-on-one. I just don't think that would be appropriate.
No, I mean, you could've said, "Hey, we've got a meeting at such-and-such a date. Would you like to show up so that we can discuss this situation?"
Let's plan a date.
I prefer to have Tom there when we have this meeting as well.
Agreed. So check with your schedule or whatever, and then we'll set a date, and I'll, I'll go with you. I promise. I apologize to you.
Or I will. Sounds like it's truly just a misunderstanding.
Who?
It was just a misunderstanding, it sounds like.
Oh, well, I mean, when you were back here in the back, you said, "I'll meet with Mr. Russell", and will, and...
I guess what I'm saying is it wasn't intentional. I think the ball just got dropped, and I don't think anybody is to blame. I don't think everybody was on the same page. In fact, if anything, I'll take responsibility for that. I should've done a better job.
I don't want to blame it on any one person.
But everybody does, when we get together, does want to have a resolution, so we will get that.
And I want to have a resolution also. But I also have went out and got a business permit because of this garage sale crap. And I asked Amy last month for a copy of the town ordinances. I still don't have that. Nothing against Amy.
Thank you.
But I want to see if there's ordinances in there for a business that I have to abide by. I don't want to say I've got a business now, and then damn, three days later, I've got an ordinance violation.
So I work, so I work at a bank. So are you active, are you active at the state? I mean, like you paid your certificate, you're active with the state of Indiana?
Yes.
You've paid all your...
I've got the little certificate hanging inside.
Are you active? Have you, like, filled out the Secretary of State? Are you like an active dude of state?
I've got the state certificate hanging inside my building that they sent me, that I made. I had to get a business permit, I had to get E.I.U. number.
E.I.N. number?
Yeah. I've got all that now. So it's no longer considered a garage sale, I guess. But I want to know if there's other ordinances that I've gotta abide by, by the town council, because Cedric said he'd lived here for 20 years. I've lived here for 50, and these town ordinances that are being enforced now for 50 years, I never knew of them.
They've been in all the books for...
Well, yeah, I understand they've been on the books, but as far as the late enforcement of them...
Right.
For 50 years, I don't ever remember it. And for three 24-hour periods, being all the yard sales that you can have in a year is like the chicken ordinance.
Well, the yard sale ordinance, nobody usually has more than three a year anyway. I mean, on each...
Yeah, but it's not for one day.
This is like if, you know, you were leaving a business open 24/7. You were leaving it open seven days a week all year round.
No, I wasn't, because when I'm not there, it's not open, even though I leave it out.
Well, I'm not gonna argue with you on that, but we'll get with you.
And that's, you don't want to argue with me on it, but you don't want to give me a reason why.
Because it looks bad.
So it's just, it's just the books?
Well, it's piled out there, and you can't see it by the stop signs, and we've went through that time and time again. And I don't care about the line being drawn across the street, because we know that we need to paint that line across there, but still, I've seen, I watch people every day that can hardly get through there.
They can't?
You have to pull out in the middle to be able to see and get around it.
On which, which direction?
All directions, except if you're coming from, if you're coming north or south on River.
South on River.
If you're going north on River Street, you gotta get out in the middle of Main Street.
Why is that?
Because you can't see around it.
Why can't you see around?
Well, I'm not gonna argue with you about it.
They're supposed to be stopped at that stop sign like they're supposed to be. Or if there's nobody there, you can see on River Street whether they're stopped or whether there's nothing there.
We need to move along to the next part of our meeting. That's how you did the last time.
Yeah, it is. Uh-huh. Now, you want, as I'm leaving, as I'm leaving, you want to talk about me?
No.
And you want to laugh at when, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Come back and either sit down or go take a break, whichever you want. You can't let your temper get the best of you. You can't do it.
Okay, since Dwight's not with us tonight, we won't get to work on the bicentennial thing.
Should I discuss? So since Dwight's not here, he did put a, to us, like, an agenda kind of together. We'll have to have the executive meeting probably to go and finalize everything before we put information out. We are wanting to have a parade that day on July the 6th. It will start up there by the cemetery on Isor and Walnut area, and we'll probably be putting a reach alert out probably in the next couple weeks on, probably hopefully within the next week or so, on anybody that would be interested in participating in the parade. It's just gonna be a small parade for Milton residents and people who want to be involved. So if anybody's interested, they can probably just, we'll probably start, check a list with Amy at the clerk's office. You can reach, call here and be added. Just a standard parade routine, you know, no vulgar information on your, if you have a blow, or no, you know, just your standard parade etiquette to follow, if anybody's interested. Then we'll get, or we'll send it out on a tour, hopefully within the next month.
Okay. And we do need volunteers, if anyone wants to volunteer to take part in the bicentennial, and anyone can be in the parade, which is...
Yeah, anybody, anybody from any, any area, any city, doesn't have to be from here. If you know anybody that wants to be in.
Scott, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, did you notice that there's one line that went to Lincoln High School? Had someone called Cambridge, kept getting told to go, and nobody responded. So they told us out to respond, and turned out it's nothing. There's an alarm going off, apparently some brick dust got into the system instead of all. So we responded for that. And Centerville's asked us to respond if they have a structural fire in town, tanker first, because they got a water tower, they're shutting down, and it's, this is gonna be for like 12 months. They're about cleaning the inside of one water tower, replacing new lines and stuff like that, and then they're gonna be downwind, they're going, they're gonna shut the other one down. So we're looking at now 12 months or so, running with Centerville, structure fires only, unless they can just grow the things too. And we also got a house that we're gonna train in, and it's gonna be a good training. We've got, we've invited all the local departments to come and participate. The good people we got's going to learn some of the inside work on the structure fire. We are about to put it on the ground, so the homeowner is supposed to be getting all the information down on that. And we also like to say about, instead of you guys coming to our business meetings, if you'd like to have just a meeting with us officers sometime during a day like that, or during a meeting or whatever, it worked, because we got a lot of things that we need to discuss, like on this training for us, and we get thrown off track, so if we'd like...
But isn't the fire department meeting open to the public?
They, not really, because there's things on there that we need to discuss and bring up that really don't want listeners to hear about, like certain kind of trainings, the way to go through.
So I guess we were already, we were always told that they were open to the public?
We tried to make it open to the public, and...
Yeah, that's why I was, that's why I was there before I was elected at those meetings, because that's the meeting that I was told to go to, because the rest of the month was all for training.
Well, we usually do Mondays for training, Tuesdays for training out. But one Monday of the month, we could have a business meeting, but it's getting to the point where we're in there so long that we don't even get a lot of stuff out that we need to discuss. Like, we gotta start planning for this breakfast we gotta deal, and then we gotta start planning for this house we're gonna put on the ground.
So I know for us, when I was at the last meeting, which was not this past month, but before, we asked for certifications.
We're still working on that.
We do not have them, and they have, we have to have them.
We're still working on that, so...
Well, we asked it out 30 days ago, so we have to. So you can go tell Richie and Katie that we have to have them ASAP for insurance purposes.
Well, this is my feeling on it. If we do turn in, we're gonna take them straight to the insurance company, because there's a lot of private information that nobody wants to...
What's private on a certificate?
A lot of our certificates have, like, our social security numbers, stuff like that on. There's a lot of private information.
On a certificate that you print?
On a lot, on some of our certi, certifications. There's been...
So my question is that now, then, you don't want us to have your social security numbers or any of that private information, but I can walk right in here right now, pull your file, and have it? So that, that's just an excuse.
Because the water bills...
I have it.
My social security number's on the water bill?
Well, they have it for the...
I have your certification, your application is sitting here. So that's a lame excuse to not have your certifications down here.
I didn't realize you had them.
Yeah, I have your applications. I, they get turned in to me.
That'd be private information, you know.
That's not like I'm gonna run out there and spread the word that I have your social security number, but now that we've made this public, I have your social security number.
Well, you have all kind of points.
Yeah.
And council members, social security numbers.
I have everybody's. Past, I have the past, I have them all. They're right in there.
How many numbers is that?
I don't think it's very hard to get them, because you guys should have copies of all of them.
That's how I write you a check.
My copies, when Scott Hicks and I had to fall in out, and...
Can you go to the state, though, and get your...
It's hard, it's hard to contact them, because they go through so many. I mean, I tried calling again, I got a loophole the other day, and I started calling.
So you can't go in with your, like, your social security number into the state of Indiana?
In the home security?
I don't even know where it's through, but...
See, I keep getting home on security. I've got Indiana State Fire Marshal's office, and I get so many runarounds here, so I'm just gonna start...
We don't know. Well, that's why we're asking. We don't know if it's only security, where it was at.
I always thought, because I went to the state fire marshal's office, I went, because there's schooling, training, all that, I went to the state fire...
Well, I was told that if you don't have your certifications, you cannot be in those trucks per our insurance. That's why we have to have proof that you have the certifications to be in the trucks.
Might as well get with Jeff and find out how, he can take out your certifications first.
I was gonna talk to him, and then I had that semi 570, but I was too busy working with that.
Who's Jeff?
Jeff Carter, State Fire Marshal. I've got his phone number, you can call him, get with him.
I think I have his phone number, homework session.
I'm sure Richie has.
But for our reasons, we'd like to have, you know, our meetings so we can concentrate on things that we have to...
So you're telling us that we're not welcome to your business meeting?
I'm pretty much asking you if we can have separate meetings, discuss basically, listen to our officers.
I think if we are, if we get the information that we need, maybe we wouldn't have to come to your meeting.
I mean, when I was coming to them, I was taking minutes like I was your secretary, and I, if you didn't show up, or if no one showed up for the fire department, I was reading off, well, this is what was discussed at the fire meeting, and this is what they need. They need new air packs, they need this, 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 and this. I read that right here too, now.
We just are amazing, like, they got so long, because we get so much coming in at one time.
We don't even discuss anything. We just mainly just sit there, you guys do your business, then Richie asks us what we want, if there's anything that we need. And that's when we ask for the certifications for the inventory, for the roster, and the roster, all the stuff. I've got the, everything but the certifications. And the roster, and all the stuff, I, I've got the, everything but the certifications. That's, I've not got it all. But I asked for the certifications when I asked for the inventory, and I told Katie too, I said, inventory, I know it's gonna take you a minute. I got it before I got the certifications, I was told the certifications, all you gotta do is get it online. I don't know how to do it. I have no idea.
So never done it.
But we've got to have those, I, like, when I just got, I just got the list of drivers that are okay to. That were turned into the insurance, but I know there's people on there that I need to take off. How am I supposed to discuss that if nobody comes in here other than right now? I would take that to the business meeting, and I would be like, Richie, are these people still on, on the roster to drive? Those trucks? So you guys not inviting us to your business meeting?
No, I'm not saying, I'm asking if we can have separate meetings. Away from the other guys, or the other people that's not.
Uh, the other members?
Yes.
Of the fire department, so what if I have a question for Abby?
You're a little lying.
And I'm saying, what, what if I have a question for her?
I mean, I don't personally have a problem with it, some of the other people says, why do they come, it seems like our meetings go so long, so, I mean, if you guys wanna come?
So did you have a meeting this month yet?
No.
No, it's right now, it's at seven o'clock.
I think it got changed to, mostly because I came to this meeting, and we got some people in the building tonight. So we had to change, we do a little training tonight. So, I mean, if you guys wanna come, go ahead and come.
Well, we don't have, I don't go down there and wanna stir the pot or.
No, I see you do.
Anything like that, I wanna go down there, be able to bring something back, if you can't be here and no representation.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I can tell them, this was what was discussed at the fire meeting. This is what they're gonna need this next month, like a TARP.
Yeah, you're right back with Katie though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Because if Katie came, then she would be able to tell us.
I mean, I totally understand, I mean, I'm just passing along information that some of you guys requested or. But if you guys wanna come, I don't have a problem.
Well, I think it's a good thing for the Lord to come and see what really goes on in the fire meeting, you know, and I've never been to one. Sad, sad sixteen years, but I would like to know what's going on down there.
And I have a question for you, Scott, I, you said that, um, Centerville's requesting that you take care of their structure fires for twelve months, are they gonna?
No, we're not taking care of, just running mutually, we're taking water, we'll be taking, like, catching water from their town. Or supply out, we're, we'll be bringing water from here to there, we'll be using water from somewhere else.
Are they gonna, uh, reimburse any of the fuel?
I don't know, that's what we gotta have, discuss with their staff and. The chances are they have a structure fire, we're gonna roll.
That we talk to Chief, we should talk to him about it.
And have you discussed the, has Richie discussed any of this with township also?
No, Richie's got the word on.
Get it out.
Richie's been gone on vacation.
He come back to Bay, didn't he?
Last night.
Last night.
Okay, let's move along then, uh, under the unfinished business. We wanted to discuss the replacement of the grasshopper mower. And. The options are, we can either repair it and it continues to lose but trade in value, or we can go ahead and buy a new one.
I did look one up online, they are getting a fair trading price for it right now.
Well, they, right now it's worth?
Right now they're getting six thousand dollars.
Six thousand?
We traded off two years ago, we got nine.
So was, oh, there's one for Dennis equipment, why, why was the trade in? So much was, I forget.
Already wrote.
I, I've been.
Trade in on this one sixty-five hundred.
Yeah, that's more than they want in the morgue.
They want more than we can end.
And then you, I thought that one. Was the higher, with the higher amount from Dennis was with a lower trade in, was that?
Yeah, I have five hundred dollars more. Five hundred dollars more, they charged more for the mower.
So it's balancing out?
Yeah. We're better off getting the one over there.
Have you got a week's up?
This was like the fight of the same ones in hell, yeah.
So we need to make a move on it, if, if, if you feel like we need any more, I'll make a motion.
So this is saying, so one of me convinced us is no trade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the other one is with the trade.
That's when I look at the cost.
Yes.
Cost is different at the end, yeah.
The cost is like, I forget.
Couple thousand dollars more?
Yeah.
With no trade?
I make a motion, we, we get the, well, we're not, we're gonna replace Apple Farm Service Corporation.
Is there like a warranty like with it, like, are they warranted with them?
Yeah, they have a warranty on it.
But like, um, Dwight always says preventative maintenance.
That's what Junior and I were talking about that, uh, the preventative maintenance, they're at Charlie's Vertures all the time, all the time.
Right, I'm saying from the get-go, though, these preventative maintenance.
Yeah.
Every, these didn't have preventative maintenance. I can't say that, because I know that I paid for oil and, uh, every, we did that getting in the season.
Mr. Taylor, one or two got now, what happened with them was they started blowing these mowers out every time they use them. They get not.
So it is preventative maintenance.
Right.
Fan blade got busted on that, your mower trades off.
They check, change the place.
Mowing the, mowing the graveyard is hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard on children.
Right, but the new one, just following preventative maintenance from the get-go.
Yeah, we all agree on that.
Yep.
We need to scratch that to our employees.
Yeah. So we have a motion.
Yep, maybe second.
I made the motion.
Don't make me throw things.
Oh, oh. Me.
Yeah, you.
So you, you said the one from Ohio?
Yeah.
The, this one? Yeah, okay.
We can still get six thousand out of that.
And his chief.
Okay, they're getting this, okay, I'll make a motion, I mean, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. All right, now we're, we're going on to another thing that we've been tabling. And that's the sealing and striking of the parking lot out here in its past due time to be sealed. So do you have the, uh.
Can I make a copy of these?
Yeah, we probably.
No, I don't think that's for the door.
How many places have we got, just two?
Yeah, that's all it turned into.
I called four places, you know, two of them showed up. So they're pretty close sometimes?
Yeah, they're pretty, they're pretty close.
So, you think we should take the lesser, the, the cheapest one, so.
Heck yeah.
So, uh, we need to put in form of a motion.
But do we know that, do we know them?
Yeah, Armstrong's pretty big around here and, uh, shit, he had cheaper, out, he had economy.
Uh huh, I've heard, I haven't never heard of.
Well, he, he buys all his stuff off of Armstrong. Armstrong's, uh, he sells.
So Armstrong, you think he'll go with?
Yeah, he, yeah, he's cheaper, he's like about six hundred dollars cheaper.
Did you check with, all of that asphalt?
I called four, two of them showed up.
About four hundred dollars.
I don't see what I can do about the certificates, so come in with. Okay.
Thank you. So is it, so this is doing the same thing like, uh, I don't know.
Yeah.
This is, this is to come in here, paint it, paint it black and put some stripes on it. Like they're ceiling in, yeah.
Not, not paint it, conceal it, and then strike it. Got to completely strike the whole lot where it's not now.
Even out there.
Yeah, all, all apartments.
Yeah, and do the handicap spots again and all that, yeah.
And move the police department. And the whole.
Over there?
Yeah.
All right, so what we're gonna do?
We're going with Armstrong, I'll make a motion to use Armstrong.
All back out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried.
You can call them tomorrow, you. Will you call them tomorrow?
Yeah.
All right, now that brings us to the ordinance of chickens on livestock. And we've pretty much decided that, um. In order to raise chickens, you will have to produce your four H records, which you say you have, so. And we're not gonna make it legal for the rest of the town to just become chicken farmers. We have to, you know, everybody's brother will be having chickens, but I'd say there probably only a handful of families in town are probably involved in four H with that. With the raising, I'm not up on it, so I don't know. So this, uh, the goat will have to go farther out on your property where it's out of the, when it's not.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that, I'll be honest with you, I, my whole thing with coming here was not solely for me. Because I can move to the backyard, but for other people.
Yeah.
I just didn't think it was fair to just flat out say no, that you're not allowed to have chickens and whatnot, when every town around here allows it. Which I think you guys should have looked at it as, you know, if you have a teeny tiny yard, obviously, you probably shouldn't, but if you own an acre. That's, that's reasonable, which I own almost basically two, but I'm fine with that.
So we're doing that for every one chickens, right, to have chickens, you have to do.
Four H.
Twelve or less, right?
Yeah, twelve or less.
And you have to have documentation, either from the Purdue Extension Office. Um, showing that you are involved in four H to have those chickens.
Probably vaccinations too, I imagine, that's really clever.
No roosters.
Well, I'm like, I'm not sure if vaccinations are required.
No, I'll keep the roosters on the back half.
Right on.
Okay.
Right behind, I'm not sure if they're required.
Huh?
Right behind that.
Yeah.
They should be required, though.
Are they required to be vaccinated?
Cause that's how far this happens.
Uh. I'll be honest, my wife would have to answer that.
What was it?
Vaccination, if they were required by four H.
There's a black on rabbits.
She said they were.
I know on rabbits.
If she said they are, they are.
And I think they should be, cause that's what, swine flu can outbreak anywhere, so if.
Yeah, there are different things, like cows, you don't have to have them vaccinated, um, rabbits, you don't have to have vaccinated for the fair.
So for enforcement purposes, are we leaving the current ordinance in place and then putting a carve out in that says there is an exception, if you will? And in order to qualify for the exception, you have to, you have to produce A, B, and C.
Yeah.
So you're basically just amending the current ordinance, but otherwise, the ordinance and its basic formula will stand.
Yes.
Do I understand that correctly?
We're gonna vote on amendment to the ordinance and vote what we're.
So if an individual has chickens that's mounted four H?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll vote on the amendment next month then.
So can we vote on, um, produce four H records, goats in the back forty, no roosters, twelve or less?
That'd be on your amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, that on it.
So that'll also mean we're on a hold right now. For the other people that got chickens, it shouldn't really happen.
So then do I have, how, do I have ten days to move the goats then, I guess?
Or for the next month you've got, okay.
So do you keep those chickens for like next year, can they show, the chickens again?
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, thank you, I mean.
Well, no, some animals you can't keep. So chickens are the one that you can't keep.
Yeah.
Are there, are.
Like, you could show the same rabbit, you could show the same chicken, I mean.
So the same rabbit cannot be shown each time, like, well, as a meat rabbit, either you got a rooster, stewer, or. Eat some meat, or the third one, and after that, they're usually gone.
I wish my wife was here because she's, again, I, I work too much, she handles all that stuff.
Right.
But I know for a fact, um, my oldest daughter won grand champion with a rabbit. And then I know the following year, my other daughter showed it, so.
Right, cause you can show it as like the baby, and then you can show it again as the rooster, like in the meat department, and then the following year you can show it as a stewer.
With chickens, there's layers or meat chickens, and so you're talking about meat chickens and they have layers, so they can show layers and roosters over and over. And a layer will last like eleven years.
Well, I'm just talking about rabbits, I don't mean.
That's what I'm saying, that's what chickens are.
They were the same way.
And a meat chicken, we just play after a year, they.
Nuggets that will not last.
Triple. So they, the meat chickens, they have an option at the end, the four H can optional off.
Really, you know, the people that buy them don't take them home?
Yeah, you, yeah, don't take them home, some people do, and they eat them.
Yeah, I don't think none of our, our people that buy our animals at Fayette County, um, actually take the animals. Um, um, they usually just, it's a donation to the kids.
I don't allow them, but for the meat, they did, the meat chickens, they would.
No, the, the, if the chickens like that and the rabbits, there's actually a producer that comes in and buys all the meat rabbits and the chickens that wanna go bye-bye and all the rabbits that wanna go bye-bye. But like, at, for that, you get five dollars a rabbit. The kind, the producers come in and pay five dollars a rabbit and then go bye-bye.
Easy, no problem.
Okay, let's move on then to the AEDs discussion and voting on that.
And you guys have seen the quote for a long time.
Fresh, do you fresh remember I just?
Oh, just a little bit. This for six AEDs, she went from seven hundred and eighty-three down to six hundred and seventy-two fixed rate for three years.
Was, was that one that we were thinking was the most popular?
Centos, yes, and if we buy them outright, they're way more expensive.
The batteries are expensive, and we've got to have.
So did we take? That six seventy-two a month? Yep, fixed rate for three years.
And they maintain them.
And they maintain them, if the fire department was to go out and have to use the AED. With them having two, they will have a backup, thank God, but they'll be able to, um, call, what's her name? Mrs. Njol. And, um. She'll have Centos deliver the used, pick up the used AED and remove or give them a new one.
So every time they're, it's used as being replaced?
Yes.
The pads.
The pads.
Oh, the pads. I was gonna say.
Not the whole.
They're a little costly and, I mean, it's, it's actually surprising.
Yeah, the pads, the pads that they used not long ago with on Mill Street. Um, to replace those was eighty-seven and some change, eighty-seven dollars and some change, just like that.
We don't have pay to replace a pad, because we don't have.
It's in the contract.
So we've tabled this for two million months, so we need to decide on making a vote on it.
So then, so then the fire department will be responsible with two, the police department will be responsible paying for two.
One here and one with the.
And then the town will be responsible for paying for two.
Yeah, that's acceptable, yep, so if you take that six seventy-two divided by three, that's what it's gonna be.
Not with law company.
Centos.
I made a motion, we do it.
It's a requirement to have those, um, some of our town.
We should have. I, I made the.
You made the motion?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I was.
All in favor, aye, all opposed, motion carried. All right, now we've got the, uh, uh, penalty cost adjustment. And I think normally if, if you were under vi- uh, uh, violation on your yard. I think in the past, they were charging a hundred dollars an hour or something like that, but now it's just a hundred dollars that the town has to come and mow your yard.
That's the only change that was made.
So that was the only change on the cost, do we, or do we need to vote on that?
Yep, to accept it.
All right, do I hear a motion that we make this cost adjustment?
So this over here never changed, this didn't change.
Just that last.
Bottom.
At any time the town, there will be an additional charge of that.
On both of theirs.
So is it, before you vote on that, just out of curiosity, was there, has there ever been any discussion about what the criteria is prior to us going and mowing someone's lawn and sending them a bill for it? Do they have to have been written an ordinance, I've not seen anything in writing, and the one thing I would recommend, not to stop you from voting on it tonight, but to at least give some consideration to is what's, what's. What's, what's the finding factor, when do you decide we're going to mow that, is it, you've had a warning, had a violation, and you still haven't abated it? Or just one warning and you haven't abated it, we have the right to go do that, and then if you do that.
I thought it was after the thirty days.
No, and, and see, and here's the other thing, when you do that, especially you have to consider if there's an ordinance out on it, like we had one here the other day that was on a warning. And would have been at the point of a violation. But we voted.
Tom, and, is it ten days or fourteen days?
It's fourteen days to pay, ten days to abate, so if there's an issue.
So maybe twenty-four days?
No, no, that's our, two separate issues, so in order to fix the issue, whatever the violation is, they have ten days.
Okay.
And if they're issued a fine on a totally separate issue, they have fourteen days to reconcile that fine. And, and I think that time, I'm purely speculation, but I think that was set up sort of around people's paydays, cause it gave people time to get paid, but. Just something I would consider there, I think that's something we, we need to consider before we concrete all that.
It would be super tall.
I would say, I would say to the first one, the warning violation, after that one, when you issue the second one, they have fourteen days, and they'll do it, we mow it.
Or, if you've been warned, and we can show receipt of the warning, at the point of ten days, when we issue the ordinance violation. We also have the, the authority to mow, if that's what you choose to do.
And they get the hundred dollars added to the.
Right.
Yeah.
Check out for this first violation, the, the, um, so that one needs to be, and, and, you don't have to be amended in the.
Well, I would, I would write an amendment on it.
So we won't vote on that tonight?
No.
Hey, if they want to rush it out, I can take it to work.
All right, now, Amy's gonna read the six month first, or, on this one, this business.
Okay, the accomplishments in the last six months, we are still diligently reaching out to our residents to decrease their delinquent bills, to date, the arrears have been cut in by fifty percent. More than that probably today. As I'm sure you have seen or might have heard on social media, yeah, I'm the devil. We continue to encourage, encourage everyone to become a member of the Reach Alert, this allows us to not only send out a group message. But we also can send out individual messages, it really is a great means of communication, when I say that, that means that. If there's a water leak on South Street, I can pick everybody that lives on South Street and just send it to them instead of sending it out to the whole town. And if you are getting, your water's getting ready to get shut off, I can send it just to you. Stuff like that, it really is something that's pretty easy to use. Since January first, the accomplishments have been plenty, we have installed a complete security system, upgraded our office to be very efficient at a very low cost. The State Board of Accounts requested that this be done immediately, if you are coming in as a newly elected official. We also endured a hacker, and were not able to run our daily duties for several days. With the help of, and suggestions of the Hagerstown Courts, we reached out to Midwest I T, and within days, we were here scan, they were here scanning our computers. And getting us back up and running safely, they installed a server that is now watching around the clock for the hackers. We also found unnecessary spending in our, on our internet provider, which at the time, we were paying five hundred dollars a month, and now we are spending zero. This savings of six thousand dollars a year is going to be utilized to cover our server costs, which is protecting us from all those wonderful hackers. Due to the installation of the electronic meters, meter readings, the meter reading is taking Bruce less time with great success. We also were able to save money, and Bruce was able to make a wish list of contingency money on the grant. Is where we saved the money, Bruce was asked to make a wish list for the needs of the water department, that were long overdue and desperately needed. Out of everything that he put on that list, only two things were turned down, and they were both painting the lift station and painting the garage. Everything else is still on the list. We're hoping that the state says, yes, go ahead. Our police department to date has applied for and received more than forty thousand dollars in equipment, not including the fully equipped law enforcement vehicle. We have secured successfully law enforcement coverage for our community, along with serving Pershing for a year. We also identified and initiated a cost-saving program for our town, fuel usage by purchasing if, by purchasing fuel, and saving eighteen cents on the gallon. The tank sent the garage right next to the diesel tank. Our office significantly increased communication with the community by increasing our hours two or three days a month, and with quick response on social media. We had residents that needed to discuss their water bills, and our office made the decision to come back after hours, to make sure that their needs were met. We also have an after hour phone number that allows us to serve you more efficiently. After a long discussion with our insurance company, and finding that we have been paying for parcels that were privately owned. Everything is fixed now, and the coverage is only on properties belonging to the town. Finally, and with the help of the Indiana State Police Detective, we have successfully regained the pistol that was missing from the safe. And that's been the last six months.
All right, having said that, uh, I thank you all for coming, and I entertain that someone make a motion that we adjourn.
I'm making, I'm adjourned.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we adjourn.